Welcome tonight. Welcome tonight to my first regular session, Mayor and City Council meeting as your new mayor. Today at 6:00 PM, Wednesday, January 11th, at City Hall Complex. I call this meeting to order, and may we have all stand for the pleasure of allegiance. Mr. Dickey, take the honors.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united up, in the full of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We got two called to the publics. First will be Ms. Martha Rodriguez. Please come to a podium and state your name. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. Buenas tardes. Good evening. My name is Martha Rodriguez. I am representing the community of Nogales, especially Meadow Hills area. We, the community of Nogales, Arizona, are looking for an immediate solution regarding water running across Country Club Drive. This is affecting us in so many ways in our daily life. We urge involved authorities to take consideration of this matter. We really appreciate your attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I make a comment on that? Nope, you can't, right? Okay. We got a second call to the public, Mr. David Hathaway. Please come to a podium, sir, local sheriff. Thank you. State your name and address, sir.
David Hathaway. Okay, David Hathaway, I'm resident of Rio Rico. Buenas tardes para empezar, para decir feliz año a todos y que es un privilegio para mí estar acá para hablar de la relación entre el condado de Santa Cruz y la ciudad de Nogales. I want to first thank the outgoing council members and mayor for their service to the community and welcome the new mayor, Maldonado, and the new council members and the previous mayors also of the... Thank you for your service to the city of Nogales. Just to make a little comment about the outgoing mayor, Garino, I should have said this during the last council meeting when he was present, that he was very instrumental with us beginning the fight against fentanyl in our community. I remember about a year and a half ago, he brought me into his office and said, Sheriff, we can't let this get a foothold in our community. It was just becoming a threat across the US, and I think we did a good job getting out ahead of it. Mayor Garino recruited myself, Chief Roy Bermúdez, County Attorney George Silva, and various others to talk at various community events. Although we do have a part of the fentanyl problem in our community, as far as a user problem, we don't have a big problem like some other communities have. So I just wanted to mention that with Mayor Garino, that he helped us get out in front of the fentanyl problem. The main reason I'm here tonight is just to talk about how we are all small agencies. The city of Nogales is very small. The Santa Cruz County agencies are very small. Just to give a little statistical piece of that, like my whole staff, detention, deputies, records, dispatchers, is in the realm of 85 people. Compare that to Pima County, they have 1,700 employees. So it's like, you know, we live in a different world. We all have to work together. We all have to get along together. So that's all I really wanted to say. I just wanted to start out the year with the new mayor, new council members, telling you, thank you for your service. It's a very important relationship between city and county. We've got along fantastic, and I know that that will continue. That's basically all I have to say. Thank you very much for all that you do.
Appreciate you, Mr. Hathaway, and thank you, and we'll be talking a lot. Thank you. No more calls to the public?
No.
Next item is... Put it on the agenda. First of all, you know, take advantage for those that were not at inauguration. I want thank you for giving me this opportunity, giving me this opportunity to be where I am. I do it for me, for... Not for me, for you. I do, but I do it out of my heart. You know, it's... I had kids participate in my ceremony, and that's something that I want to start involving in the community. More kid participation, more teenage participation. You know, we're going to be talking about ambassadors here in our community, in our city hall, everything. You guys are the future to this city. We're not that old, but you guys are the future. We're trying to set up, set the standards on the city, how we all got to work together. And that was one of my main focus at the inauguration. You know, council. Congratulations for those who re-voted. And congratulations to Mr. Doyle for being the new council member. First of all, I want to pay Ms. Esther Melendez, we feel for your mother. You know, we're to... I know her from the neighborhood, you know, the family, but we feel for your mother, man. And we'll... God bless you. And, but, council, we've talked, you know, a little, did not have, haven't had the opportunity with Melendez on a one-to-one. We did talk by phone. I've had already a conference with each council member on how we got to move forward, how we got to move forward, not me, the city and the council. We got to work for the community together. We got to do things together. We got to look at ideas, put people, you know, directors, employees of the city. Everybody's going to be responsible and accountable for what their work is. We have to have our projects out in the open. Where do we spend the city money? You guys, everybody hopefully will know where and how we get things done. But it's going to be open to the public and open to a community. Anybody has questions, feel free to call me, call the office. Feel free to contact any council members, and we should have the answers. If we don't have it, we'll look for it and find it. But again, you know, thank you for the opportunity that I have been head of the council and the head of the city. And let me tell you, I will not waste my time. I'm here to work and try to do things to get better. Because I could do a lot of things with my family and my personal life, but I wish to help my city. The city, that's for everybody. So thank you, and that's all I have on my... Well, one other thing I have on my mayor update is, I want to give out some special thanks to all the people that helped me on my inauguration ceremony. And first of all, you know, it was very, very nice. I really enjoyed it. It made a big difference having the youth involvement. It made, basically, the words came out of youth, out of my guest speaker. You know, I think I spoke to what it is, you know. I don't write speeches. I write words that give me reminders of what I want to get across. Everything else comes from me, from my heart. And it's directly to you, to the council, to the working staff. Everybody did a great job. So, you know, first, I want to give my ceremony coordinator, everything conductor, Ms. Ana Parada. I want to give you and present you with this certificate in recognition of the outstanding dedication and commitment to the city of Nogales 2023 in inauguration appreciation. Thank you. That's for you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Next, I'm gonna go with the Masters of Ceremony. I know if you would help me. Ms. Martha Armenta. Aiden Armenta. Jimena Bohorques. Thank you, sir. Thank you, mija. Marina Monje. Garino. Rebecca Del Grande. Langer. Bobby Conchola. Thank you, sir. Gia Bolaña. Fernanda Acosta. Thank you, mija. My great singer, my brother, has helped me in Little League and everything, the regionals, Jimena Pérez. Thank you, mija. The baile folforico, Patty Maris. Also, Alexa Sosoya. One is for the NAC, Mariachi Apache. One for Mr. Gilberto Vélez. Yorizorio Figueroa. Yonixio. Yonixio. You get to have the glory to say my first mistake. From the color guard, Officer Marina Duran. Fighter fire, back to them, De Yele. He's not here, okay. Sergeant Armando Vázquez. Armador Vázquez. Kaká Choyse. Officer Ángel Santiago. I got one for the Nogales Police Department. Got one for the Nogales Fire Department for the help and support. City staff, Ramiro Estrella. José Fimbras. Carlos Villán. Luis Aguirre. Jostino Pinto. Martín Gama. Nogales High School. United Fight School District. El amigo que siempre lo ha hecho todo, Alfredo López. Muchas felicidades, eh? Gracias. Gracias por todo su apoyo. The decorating personnel, Diana Parada. Thank you, Diana. Vanessa Parada. Anthony Duckman. Andrew. Andrew Duckman. Thank you, buddy.
Nice job.
Andrew Matthew Duckman. Your dad? Operator Duckman. Thank you very much. From the city staff, Ms. Letizia Robinson. Thank you very much. Mid Judy Herado. Mr. John Kissinger. Thank you, John. Thank you, sir. And Mr. Edward Dickey. Yes. Thank you all. Again, you know, well, these people, it would have been very hard to do everything we did. And I really appreciate all your help. Mariachi, Folforico, the singers, the staff that helped out with the presentation, everything, the girls that helped with seating the people, the color guard, police. I forgot one. There's also the Shuttles, Santa Cruz Training Center. I know they were not going to be here.
Andres Burgos.
Yeah, Andres Burgos, Andy, my neighbor, and he's been with the city for a long time and also as one of our drivers. But thank you, everybody, and really appreciate for all your help and support, and let's keep on doing it. Appreciate it. Thank you. Muchas gracias, eh? Thank you, buddy. Okay, now, now we go to discussion items. Discussion Item A, discussion and possible action and appointment of vice mayor. Before I do this one, you know, it took a lot of thinking, and I want to go with what happened when I first became to the council. You know, the elections just passed, the elections were conducted, and when I first became council, actually, Mr. Doyle was the mayor, and I learned that the highest voter has the right to be vice mayor. I've talked to the highest voter, Mr. Hector Bohorques, and I would like to nominate Mr. Hector Bohorques as our new vice mayor. In a second?
One second.
Any discussion? Miss? Okay. No, okay. Okay, no, that's, you know, all in favor?
Aye.
All right? Against? I stake it, and Ms. Esther, nothing against you, but I really appreciate everything you've done, everything you have done, and everything you will do. Thank you, and really appreciate for being the vice mayor for the time that you were. Thank you. Item B, presentation, discussion, direction, and possible action, OS3 May 6, 2023, Second Annual Nogales Quarter Marathon, and improvements to the Monte Carlos Trails Bike Park. I think they have a... Something? Presentation?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Edgardo Muñoz. Thanks for having us today, Mr. Mayor Maldonado, City Council. Thank you very much for the opportunity and the community of Nogales. We're gonna try to be as brief as possible. We have a little presentation, and with me is Lia Muñoz. She's a youth, OS3 youth volunteer that will read you a letter that I think all of you are receiving now. Thank you.
Dear Mayor Maldonado and honorable council members, like my dad said, my name is Lia Muñoz, and I've been a Cero Estres youth volunteer since I was 12 years old, and now I'm 18. Cero Estres is a nonprofit organization that promotes bicycling and outdoor activities here in our border, city of Nogales, Santa Cruz County, Arizona. This year, 2023, our organization will be celebrating its 10th anniversary, serving the young and young at heart and their families through our various educational programs related to cycling and other outdoor activities such as education and road safety, the bicycle as means as transport, the importance of wearing a helmet, basic mechanic workshops, bicycle adoption for people with transportation and recreational needs, multiple bike rides of all ages and levels, Monte Carlo Trails and Bike Park. Once again, thank you to councilman John Doyle for giving us the green light to start the construction of Monte Carlo Trails, summer bike camp for children from ages four to 12 years old. In the last eight constructive years, it has been carried out with great success and receiving around 80 boys and girls from our county. The summer camp is carried by young leaders from our community between the ages of 13 and 18, the same ones that make our Cero Estres Reptilians Bi-National Youth Cycling Team. Cero Estres Reptilians Bi-National Youth Cycling Team is made up of young leaders who are physically and mentally prepared for the bi-national competitions and the state youth championship of Arizona. This last program has been so successful with the youth that in just four years, our athletes of four in 2019 became 19 athletes in 2022. The program has a great interest among young people, but of all, it serves a great potential for our community, and Nogales has a seedbed of athletes. In 2022, our youth team was crowned the best team in its division, competing against athletes/teams from Flagstaff, Prescott, Phoenix, Tucson, and Sierra Vista, among many others. Our youth are not only athletes, but they're also ambassadors and promoters for our community, which reflect the present and the future of our entire community. It's important to mention that these youth athletes are not alone since Cero Estres Movement predisposes coaches who are prepared and certified every year through the Arizona Cycling Association and have necessary knowledge to train high-performance athletes. In these 10 years of hard work, hundreds of people have participated, complete families. The cycling community has grown as well as the culture of cycling. Little by little, our city becomes an avant-garde city that is friendlier to pedestrians and cyclists, as in larger cities that opt for alternative means of transport within everyone's reach. Let's continue to build together a healthier, happier, and stronger, prouder community. Through this communication, Cero Estres Movement extends our interest in working on new administrations and continuing to offer our various programs, services, projects, and initiatives without interruption, but also to continue each more youth and their families so that more youth have the same opportunities to participate and develop with this discipline, which will undoubtedly improve their physical and mental state, as well as many other, as them to be more independent, contributing members with their homes and their communities. Mayor Maldonado and members of the City Council of Nogales, Arizona, Cero Estres Movement's cyclist family extends an attentive and cordial invitation to continue building together a healthier, happy, strong community and proud. Thank you so much for listening and for your time. If you have any questions for me or our coaches and athletes and family, we'd be more than happy than to answer them. Thank you. I would also like to invite Melissa to talk about our next upcoming event. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Muchas gracias, Lia. Y feliz 2023. Estamos ansiosos de trabajar con ustedes y sobre todo agradecer a la ciudad y a todo el miembro de consilio por brindarnos este gran apoyo a los largos de ya casi diez años. Entonces, cero estrés, como ya todo lo que mencionó Lia, trabaja para la comunidad, trabaja para que nuestros jóvenes, nuestros adultos estén activos, estén físicamente saludables, mentalmente saludables. Es por eso que pedimos la ayuda de ustedes para trabajar mano a mano para llevar el segundo año esto que le vamos a explicar, que fue nuestro Nogales Cuarto de Maratón. Y sobre todo, Esther Melendez, muchísimas gracias por todo su apoyo a toda la ciudad. Muchísimas gracias por el apoyo. Entonces, Nogales Cuarto de Maratón es un farm racing que hace cero estrés para llevar a cabo todos nuestros ya programas mencionados. El año pasado, que fue nuestro primer maratón, tuvimos 400 corredores. Que cero estrés, al decir, va a ser nuestro primer evento. Nosotros respaldados por un gran comité, por nuestros jóvenes y nuestros padres, dijimos, vamos a hacerlo de 200 personas. Nosotros, al ver que niños desde tres añitos hasta adultos mayores de 84 años nos decían, ábreme, por favor, la inscripción, 200, un corredor, que no pasa nada con uno más. Nosotros decimos, estamos preparados con 400 medallas, vamos. Y gracias al apoyo de la ciudad, decidimos hacer para 400. Nos dimos cuenta que fue un éxito, nos dimos cuenta que nuestro condado está listo y tiene sed de salir a las calles, de divertirse, de tener esa diversión y de estar saludables. Entonces, ahora, con el gran apoyo de ustedes, que es lo que venimos a pedir, queremos prepararnos para 600 corredores. Entonces, queremos que el Nogales Cuarto de Maratón sea algo que Cero Estrés haga de mano a mano con la ciudad cada año. Entonces, Cero Estrés no lo puede hacer solo. Siempre es con la mano de ustedes. Es por eso que venimos a pedirle su apoyo. Estuvimos recibiendo corredores de todo Arizona. Recibimos, vimos gente de Colorado, de Las Vegas, de Sonora, y pues, de Hermosillo. Nos pedías gente de Hermosillo, estamos yendo, pero dónde nos podemos hospedar? Entonces, sabemos que es algo que la comunidad y la ciudad está lista para poder llevar a cabo. Repartimos alrededor de 120 trofeos. Sé que muchos de aquí presentes tuvieron la oportunidad de ver las caritas de esos niños chiquititos y de ver las caras de las señoras terminar esos cinco y diez kilómetros. Cero Estrés, cada sábado nos reuníamos en la Pearson y practicábamos con gente que nos decía, yo no soy corredor, pero me encantaría ponerme como meta terminar mis cinco kilómetros. Entonces, lo que hizo Cero Estrés es preparar a un coach para que ayudara a esas personas, los instruyera con un poquito de clase de nutrición y completamente voluntarios. Entonces, algo muy importante aquí fue nuestras agencias. Tuvimos una feria de salud, que en esta feria de salud recibimos 28 agencias, que nosotros estamos completamente agradecidos, Edgardo, de poder colaborar. que nosotros estamos completamente agradecidos, no, Edgardo, de, de poder colaborar con toda la mayoría de las agencias de, de nuestro condado. Estuvieron midiendo la presión arterial, estuvieron dando bastantes recursos. Entonces, se complementó el deporte, la salud, y terminamos con las maravillosas fiestas. Entonces, sentimos que, que es un día completamente de diversión y que se le da a nuestra comunidad algo muy bueno. Entonces, si ustedes no los permiten, quisiéramos hacer esto año con año. No sé si tengan alguna pregunta, alguna aportación, pero sobre todo, mil gracias por, por todo el apoyo que nos han brindado.
My, my question would be, uh, you know, Mr. Dickie, do you recall what, what we supported this function with in the past year?
I wasn't here at the time, but I could ask Mr. Kissinger if he remembers how much we supported them with.
Mayor?
Yes.
Last year, we did it in conjunction with the Fiesta de Mayo. So we just combined them together and we just took care of it. I'm anticipating we'll do the same thing this year.
Okay, is that sufficient or were you guys looking for something else?
Or is it on the same day?
Si, si.
If it's on the same day, it's a city event, we just incorporated it into the city event, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, was, was there an amount? Do you know that we? Okay, as long as we, we're in line with, with our numbers and regulations.
We worked together to make an appointment.
Okay. Legal, we're good? Okay, so all in favor of supporting Cero Estres on the May 6, 2023 Second Annual Quarter Marathon, with the same support that we did last year with that? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Any nays?
Mil gracias por todo y gracias a nuestra seguridad pública que, pero accidentes y muy agradecidos por todo el esfuerzo que hicieron durante todo el, todo ese día. Gracias.
Gracias y tengan mucho cuidado en las bicicletas. Next item, I put it on the agenda. Next item, I put it on the agenda, it's discussion, possible action to include invocation, to add regular meetings. This item, I put it, you know.
Really quick before we move forward, for clarification purposes, we didn't vote on a, on a motion, so to clarify, do we need to go back and do a motion?
I, I took the mayor's comments as a motion.
And no second? It were good?
Appreciate your clarification. I'm a rookie, remember. Thank you. So we're good, Legal? Thank you. Okay, next item, I put it on, on the agenda. It's, you know, there's a lot of different religions out there and there's a lot of, you know, different feelings. You know, I've got no problem with, with an invocation, but you know, I just want to know what the council feels, you know. Are you, are you okay with it? You know, down in the agenda, I've got plans for two meetings a month. You know, should we do it once a month? How do you guys feel? I said in my, in my, I've always said, we're, we're going to discuss things and I want to know how everybody feels and that's why I'm going to ask. Can everybody give me their point of view, please? Now you're speaking, my friend.
Thank you. I think that when you invoke God's blessings, there usually, there's, in, in the hidden realm, the spiritual realm, which is part of each individual, whatever belief it is. And I think when we invoke, there's, and ask for the blessing, city business and any business that, that's involved kind of runs smoother. It seems like there's more harmony, more peace because there's more respect. Because all of us, or at least most of us, have that fear of God in our being and it reminds us to be respectful. And respect brings harmony and peace. So I would encourage that, that we do have the invocation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Mr. Gradia?
When we took our oath, we swore on, swore to God, so I think we've already started with that, so I'm, I'm for it.
Okay, is Meléndez?
Yes, I'm for it as long as they don't make it short, make it short. Yeah, because I know you, John. That's my only request.
I know that Councilman Doyle was a previous, the mayor that brought the invocation to the meetings. Is there any, did you have any problems trying to get people to come in and do the invocation? Or, or did you just rotate two or three people? Did you go throughout the whole community and, and pass out the word that there's going to be an invocation at the beginning of each meeting? And any religion is welcome to come in? So, so I don't know if you had any problems with that.
No, no, it's, like I said, it's, it's, it's a kind of a spiritual thing that reminds us all that there's a creator, there's somebody that, that kind of just brings us to the table with more respect.
Well, since there's no problem with that, you know, I'm, I'm good with it.
Mr. Boni?
Uh, Mayor, just a quick, a quick question. Have you thought, it's a great idea, have an invocation. I also agree with all the council members. Have you thought of, or how are you going to go about including all the denominations here in Nogales? I mean, because we're, Nogales is like real diverse, so, and, you know, technically right now, because we haven't voted, we only have 12, 12 meetings, unless we go to the, the second one, then we have 24. But have you thought of, of how you're going to go about and, and including all the denominations so that they can, so just in all fairness?
Yeah. You know, my thought, and I've talked to John once, you know, is basically, you know, open it up, who's, who's interested, maybe make a couple of calls, who's interested. Obviously, don't have a repeater till we go down the line and then, you know, open, just open it up and, you know, and when they're, they make their invocation, thank them and we'll let them know when their next turn is. But, you know, I'm not sure how many pastors or, or churches are in total in the city. And we talked, you know, because we got to try to include everybody. We can't, we can't pick and choose and just you and, just you and not them and all that. Because there's, you know, we don't want to fall into any legal, you know, things of neglecting one or the other. So we'll, we'll do it openly and, and, you know, get a list and, and rotate them. I think that's the best thing that we could do and keep us out of trouble, right?
Sure, you could. Yeah, you couldn't establish a procedure where everybody will have equal opportunity to do it. So, I mean, let's just see how many people are interested in doing it and then we can figure out how to do it so it's fair to everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Rojques?
Mr. Mayor, yes, I've got a question for, for Mr. Machado. Do they need to be certified, like a pastor or a preacher? Do they need some kind of certification that they come up here?
No, not, not really. Anybody could give the invocation, you know, and the council may even think of having a standard invocation and just having people read the invocation that, that you like. I mean, there's, it all depends how you want to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just have to remind council that anyone can ask to say the prayer if we open it up to any denomination, satanic, anything, we can't say no to them. I just want to let council know that.
Okay. Any other comments? So with this said, we'll make a motion to start working on a list to have somebody, you know, a person, because it can't say a pastor or priest, or to do the invocation on, on a, once a month? Or you guys want it every meeting?
Every meeting.
Every meeting, okay, every meeting? Have a person do an invocation for the, our council meetings? So with this said, all in favor? Any second? Mr. Doyle, seconds? Any, all in favor?
Aye.
Nay? Nobody? Nothing? We'll start working on getting a list. Okay, now we go to the item D, discussion and possible action on setting a second monthly meeting on the third Tuesday, third Tuesday, not Wednesday, we're used to Wednesdays, third Tuesday of the month at 6:00 PM. Again, I brought this into the agenda because I want to make it, make it, you know, we can't solve the city issues on one day or one, you know, so. And I want to make a motion on putting this in the agenda for every Tuesday. Any second? Thank you, Mr. Rojques. Discussion? Go ahead, Mr.?
Quick question, would this be beginning next Tuesday? It's a quick turnaround or do we start the following month?
We're thinking, I've got the 23rd.
The third Tuesday would be the 16th.
No, 17th.
The 17th.
The 17th.
I think, I think for the jump that we made.
Next week.
We, we made this week, we'll jump this week and, and
24th.
To the 24th and, and then starting on, starting on February, then it'll be the second Tuesday. Excuse me, the third Tuesday. Mr. Bonilla, you had something?
Just a quick question, that's all fine with the two meetings. Have you stopped and considered the housing? That's me, or you don't plan on having the housing meeting every month or?
The housing, the housing meeting is the third Wednesday, right? Or Tuesday?
I know that, I'm, I'm, I'm sure that we don't always have a meeting, but.
Second, second Tuesday.
Okay.
It's the second Tuesday of each month at 3:00 PM. This month, they're going to put together an agenda and have it on the 18th at 3:30 PM. You'll be getting an agenda for that.
Why don't we jump it to the 24th and have it together at 3 o'clock on the 24th? Um, Mr. Dickie?
It's the 24th.
You can do it, but forget, you're acting as a council, not as commissioners right now. So you can discuss it, but the decision's going to have to be made by the commission.
What's that up prior to the later? Okay, yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dickie, for consistency, when are the housing meetings? Like, I know they change and one, the recent one just got canceled. What, can you give me like the?
I think there are bylaws, and I have Robert here if he needs to speak anymore, but the, the bylaw, the bylaws were the same day as the council meeting. And for some reason or not, council wanted to move it to the second Tuesday. Second Wednesday, no, second Wednesday at 3:00 PM, is that correct?
That's, well.
See, that's what I mean.
Okay.
So, so the bylaws state that the housing commission meeting should coincide with the council meetings. So if mayor and council decide to go an additional week for the council meetings, we would honor that as well. However, the bylaws also say that the chairman or the mayor, in this case, would be the one to tell us what time the council meeting would be. So by, by the bylaws, it's the Wednesday coinciding with the council meeting.
But they moved it to the second Tuesday, not Wednesday, correct?
Well, Robert, we, we were looking at that order. Robert, we were looking at that order where it's, it's on Wednesdays.
Right, so it's, 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 so the current bylaw that I found a couple days ago says that it's the Wednesday to coincide with the council meeting. Traditionally, we've been doing the second Wednesday of the month. How it flipped from the first to the second, that's really something that's been just a traditional move for the last, I don't know, several years.
Okay. And they're asking to have it on the eight, on the what day?
I'm sorry?
And you're asking to have it on the 18th at 3:30?
So we're, we're anticipating, hopefully, the board of commissioners can meet at 3:30 on the 18th, which would be next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
That's a different item, ain't you?
No, I mean, you can do it. Keep in mind though that the official action is, is from the commission, with the board. But I mean, we're talking about regularly scheduled meetings. It doesn't mean that you can't change them.
Right.
You know, as needed.
Right.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gradia?
We are talking about two different situations. Adding that extra meeting doesn't affect the housing meeting. Bylaws of the housing meeting coincide with our first scheduled meeting of the council. So if we got to follow the bylaws, we will be following that Wednesday.
We will look at it and, and make sure we got it right after, you know, tomorrow or so.
Definitely.
And make sure we're, we're correct with the bylaws and, and doing it the right way.
And we missed this Wednesday's meeting, so that's the one that has to be rescheduled or postponed.
Which is the one I was asking, you know, they, they had asked me to do it on the 18th, but now that we're considering to do it, have this second meeting of the council on the 24th. I was going, I'll ask them about doing it on the 24th.
Absolutely, Mayor, I'll, I'll take that direction.
We don't have, all have to be, come two days or. Okay, but for now, on the agenda is discussion, possible action, the second meeting for, for the council on the third Tuesday of the month at 6:00 PM. And like I said, with, with this month, jumping a week on the, on the agenda because of the down duration and, and all that, on this month of January, we would have it on the 24th, the Tuesday, the 24th. Am I correct, sir?
Sure.
And following that, it will fall on the third Tuesday, starting February 2023.
Somebody's so moved. Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Thank you. Now, we have a discussion and possible, and direction and possible action on a recession plan. Mr. Dickie?
Yes, Mayor, Council. We thought it'd be prudent to have some sort of recession plan put in place by the city just to kind of have a plan ready. I think it's a great idea and Jean has put together something with John and I. And what we present before you is kind of the, the categories where we'd implement a minor, a moderate, a significant, a major, and a crisis within the city. And this could, we could implement any of these. It doesn't just have to be recession, it could be an emergency, it could be a natural disaster. It, it could be anything that would qualify to help us tighten in our budgets and kind of get through the, the emergency. So we're just looking for council for approval that this just becomes our, our recession plan. And, and we're not tied to, to any one of these. If one of the things in significant makes sense to start with the minor, we can do that, just depending on the situation.
Mr. Dickie, I think, and I don't know, council, right now is the first time we've, we've seen it. I think, you know, thank you for the, the work, Jean and, and Mr. Dickie. But if council agrees, I would like for us to all read it and see it and discuss it. You know, if I tell you, let's discuss it, I want to know what to discuss it because I really haven't read it. I think council, I would like to table it and bring it back on the 24th, on the 24th. And that way, if, if there's any extra information, Jean or Mr. Dickie, that, that you could give us besides this, or if any council member or myself have any questions after we've read it, please share it with everybody and that way we could. please share it with everybody, and that way we could make the right decision on this recession plan. So I would, you know, thank you for working on it, but, you know, not to be rude or nothing, but let's, we gotta look at it before we vote on it. So I move, I move to table this to the 24th meeting Tuesday.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next discussion item, and direction and possible action, budget calendar.
Mayor, council, this, this is the budget calendar for this year, this fiscal year. And keeping in line with Mayor Maldonado trying to get everything transparent, and that, we thought we'd bring this to our council. One of the things, council, we just put in here, we put a date of May 11th and 12th for the workshop. That's something that council needs to make sure that that's a date they can do, or we can choose another one. That's, that's the days that we sit in and we do the workshop together.
Okay, I think this item would kind of fall on the same, let's all look at our calendars and see that we concede with the times of, of these, basically, January 19th. Can you explain that one, Mr. Dickey?
Yeah, it's just our director's meeting, we're, we're gonna start the, the staff needs to start the process.
Okay.
What, what we need from, from you guys is just the dates that you want to have the workshop.
Okay, just that, since I saw it upcoming, I just want to make sure we're on top of it. But council, any comments? Go ahead.
I just have two comments. Again, we just received this, and in the future, it would be really nice if we get this a couple of days, so that we can look at our calendars and be more prepared at the meetings. Having said that, I noticed that March 10th, you have staff budget retreat in Rio Rico. Now, I, I'm in the opinion that we should hold a retreat here in Nogales.
That's fine. I explained that in an email I sent out to all of council.
Could we keep it in Nogales?
We can, and that's what we planned to do, that just kind of fell in there. When we first talked about it, we thought it might be nice to be outside.
Why?
Just for another venue, we, we do it here every time, I just thought it might be nice to go somewhere else. That's what, it's just kind of common practice, it's, it's okay to stay here. Yep, and, and I did, I sent out that email that.
Where were you planning to have it in Rio Rico?
There, there's a conference place there in one of the title companies. They have, I was there for our local real estate. They had it in the title company right adjoined, it had a nice conference room, I thought it'd be nice to, to use it. We don't have to, and we, we weren't going to, that just happened to be in there, and I knew it'd be a question that you'd ask council member Montiel, and that's why I sent the email out to explain to everybody.
Let us support our, our local businesses here and as much as we can. Thank you.
Mr. Dickey, we, we've had retreats before, and we've used the Americana, because they're well-prepared for that type of
Yes.
activities, so that would be a good.
And we talked about that also. Once again, like the email said, this just happened to fall in here. I wish it would have not been on here, because we weren't not planning on going there after all. It was just something that came up, and at the time, I think it just made it in on.
Thank you.
I guess, I move to table this again, and bring it back up on our January 24th meeting. And so we could be more prepared and discuss it.
Mayor, I, I have a question.
I have a question.
What's this? I have a question, was this not in the packet?
Was this not in the packet that we sent out on Friday?
No.
It wasn't? Okay, my understanding it was out in the packet on Friday, so I'm sorry, if you just got received it, I understand, but I really thought it was in the packet on Monday, Friday.
Okay, yes, sir, Mr. Gado.
Being as this is a tentative schedule, and I think they have a target date of the 19th, which doesn't include the council, this is for staff, I think we need to move it along. And since it's tentative and subject to change, we can always amend this. I think we got to look at that also as a possibility.
Okay. Any other comments? You guys want to go with it and we change it? Huh?
Can I ask John, or is, am I, am I, is my looking at this the right way as a staff function, not a council function, but you guys need authority to start this?
No, no, let me make a suggestion. If you make a motion with these dates, then you tie yourself.
These dates, even though it's a
That's direction, information, just leave it, staff will work it, and get dates from you.
I was really looking for the dates that you guys would be able to have the two days.
And, and that's what I thought, that way we could correlate between us and make sure everybody's available on these dates. Any, anybody has any issues on X date, might, might be out of town, whatever, but we'll bring it back on the 24th. And hopefully, you know, we, we could be more direct on, on being able to give staff more direction on, on the correction of dates, or we need to move left and right, up and down. Let's have, be prepared for the, the 24th. Okay, so I move to table this to the 24th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Who knows? No nays? Okay. Next we go to presentation, Nogales Buffalo Soldiers Legacy Association, Ms. Donna. It's Donna Jackson.
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor Maldonado.
Thank you.
City Council, staff, and the Nogales community. I am Donna Jackson Houston, and I'm the founder and president of the Nogales Buffalo Soldiers Legacy Association. It is wonderful to be here this evening, and it's been a year since we were here, and it's been a wonderful year celebrating and, and honoring the Nogales Buffalo Soldiers, so thank you so much. Thank you so much for your tremendous support, and we are going to tell you at the end of this presentation, we're going to invite you and again, ask for your support for this coming event in, in the end of the month. I would like to begin with a three-minute YouTube video that I think really captures the essence of last year's inaugural. All right. At the end, we say onward. That is the war cry of the 25th Infantry Buffalo Soldiers, and my grandfather, Lucius Jackson, was 25th Infantry, so in honor of him, onward. So, the Nogales Buffalo Soldiers Legacy Association is dedicated to honoring the memory of the distinguished all-black 25th Infantry and 10th Cavalry Regiment of the United States Army, known as the Buffalo Soldiers. The association is comprised of descendants and friends of the Buffalo Soldiers that served at Camp Steven Little, Arizona, from 1910 to 1933. The mission of the Buffalo Soldiers Legacy Association is to partner with schools and communities across the nation to educate, inform, and highlight the notable accomplishments of the Buffalo Soldiers who served patriotically while subjective to oppressive and discriminatory conditions. The 2022 inaugural did an amazing job at honoring our Nogales Buffalo Soldiers, and we enjoyed working with Nogales schools, students, and having support of the community. Thank you.
My turn. Hello, everyone, how are you? Wanted to thank the mayor and the council for having us again this year, you gonna put up with us again this year? Awesome. Wanted to show you the slide we showed it last year too, but my father, my grandfather, Lucius Jackson, is the one that's second from the right with the dog right in front of him there. We did not know that our grandfather was a Buffalo Soldier until later, when we started to, me and Donna started to kind of come down in the gallows to look at the marker that, that's down on Grand Avenue there. We went to the cemetery to visit my grandfather's grave, and we started kind of like pondering, well, hey, you know, there's rumor that he might have been a Buffalo Soldier, and that's where all this came to furtation. So we kind of basically brought up a buried treasure that Nogales, the history that Nogales has, to the surface. So now we're trying to just make it known of what the importance was of the Buffalo Soldier and the importance of Nogales being a big instrumental part of that whole history. So we want to thank you so much for letting us be part of Nogales again. I lived here and I grew up here, and I went and graduated to Nogales High School, and I also wrestled with Mr. Maldonado there, once upon a time.
Lot of kilos ago.
So we, we wanted.
Wait, wait, what, who won, huh?
He, he won, bro. We were, we were different weight classes, I think. And also, I have a, a message from my father, I spoke to him today, he's in the hospital, he's doing well. He should be out Monday, he, he thinks he's in a jail, but we, we say, no, he's not in a jail, you, you, you'll be out. And I asked him, hey, you have any words of wisdom that you'd like me to, to, to tell the city council, I'm going down there? And he thought about it, he goes, well, he says, let them all know, congratulations for, you know, being on another year, and then also, good luck.
Thank you.
My father, thank you so much.
I heard that, thank you.
Oh, you're not done with me yet?
No.
Okay. All right, and this one is the, this is the plaque I was talking about, when we, you know, Grand Avenue, most, everybody knows probably where that plaque is at. And that just distinguishes where the, the segregated school was, at the edge of the school grounds there. So we, this is my father there, my uncle David, that was instrumental in starting this whole thing, and that's what kind of like gave us this little, this, he started the candle, and then when me and Donna started to dig, we just kind of came up with more stuff.
And there's George Biggs, the ski gear man.
Oh, yeah, the ski gear man.
Yes, yes, yes.
So we'll give it back to you, Donna.
Okay, okay. And the next slide, please? Do that one.
Can I ask a question? Is John, John your uncle?
My uncle, his father.
John's your dad?
Yes, sir.
How's he, how's he doing then, is he the one that, was in the hospital?
Uh, yes, sir, he's in the hospital, he's doing great, he does have Parkinson's, so he's, he's kind of in and out. But other than that, he's supposed to be coming home on Monday, and we're happy to have him back home.
Well, time we all say hi to him, he's very close to all of us.
I sure will, I sure will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This was a very proud moment, not only was inaugural a wonderful event, but we have just so appreciated Nogales International covering not only this event, but numerous events leading up to it. And Ms. Angelus here, again, covering, hopefully you'll cover next, in the next couple of weeks. But we wanted to thank, again, Nogales International, the city, mayor, community, everyone for coming out. So, thank you. And next one?
And my name is Rayette Jackson, I am married to Ricky or Richard, whichever you call him. And I want to say congratulations to mayor, city council members, all of you for being back again this year. What a, a great opportunity it is to serve the community, and so we thank you very much. We are very excited for, to share a little bit about the, oh, wait a minute, this is 2022.
I'm gonna step back. Okay, we're gonna cover that, and then she's gonna speak. You know what, we, we will be remiss if we did not tell you what an amazing year this has been in sharing Nogales Buffalo Soldiers, not only in Arizona, but in California. So I just wanted to share that after our inaugural, it went to Tubac Presidio, and that coincided with that annual ANZA event. And then from there, it went to Pomona, and the reason it went to Pomona, I'm a longtime resident of Pomona, I'm the chair of the Community Life Commission, I'm extremely involved in the community, and there's a correlation, a very positive correlation between Nogales and Pomona. And I just really wanted to bring it to my community and beyond, and just share, again, Nogales Buffalo Soldiers and support Nogales. I just, I didn't grow up here like Ricky did, but I came here often, all the time. Know and love Nogales, we're going across the border all the time, and I think I shared with you last time, our grandfather, the Buffalo Soldier, the irony, if you will, is that he came to, with the Buffalo Soldiers to patrol the, the border, and you know that his house was literally that last house on the hill, right there, when you walk out the, the back, it's the, the border.
On East Street.
On East Street, so I just, I, you know, again, I wanted to share, that's why it's Pomona. So in Pomona, we did quite a few events in Pomona. Juneteenth, that's like the, the annual celebration of the African-Americans, and we had it at the African-American Museum of Beginnings. And then July, we had a number of events at the African-American Cultural Center. July 28th is National Buffalo Soldier Day. And then we did Veterans Day, and in Pomona, we did an inaugural African-American Veterans Day celebration to recognize African-Americans in the Pomona Valley area for their contributions. And we absolutely had that with the Buffalo Soldiers, because it's the Buffalo Soldiers that actually began after Civil War for all the other enlisted veterans. So we wanted to make that correlation there, okay? And the exhibit received tremendous support from the communities, organizations, elected officials, school leadership, universities with significant media coverage, and I don't have the exact numbers, when I was looking at, though, the, the, the different medias that covered it, I would say, I would say over 100,000 people that it, that it. say over 100,000 people that it went to. That's exciting. And then, as our mission said, that we want to work with students, just as you like to, wanted to work with students. They're our future, absolutely. So, I have partnered with an NAACP out of California, and we proposed a resolution that went to our state convention a few months ago, and it passed. We proposed a Buffalo Soldier Resolution to add their, knowledge about them in the educational curriculum. That passed, and the president of the state said, this is so important, it's gonna go to the national convention in a few months, and wouldn't that be amazing and powerful if it's approved at a national level? And so, the Buffalo Soldiers, and it began with a Nogales Buffalo Soldiers, okay, is now being taught in our schools nationally. So, I just wanted to share that, and it all started here. Thank you for your spark. Please.
So, I'm sorry. I was really excited to jump in here and tell you about this year. So, it's been a great 22, but 23, we do have plans to continue on of this historical salute. And so, as you can see on the information, we do have planned to do a more formal celebration at the cemetery, Nogales Cemetery, on Saturday, January 28th, and we will be having speakers as well as the Fort Huachuca Color Guard Cavalry again. And we also, every event involved the Nogales students. So, we've worked really closely with Mr. Colgate last year and continue to do that this year, and would like to, in the future years, expand that, maybe even beyond Nogales High School, to other schools as we're able to do that. So, our first year, we really focused on bringing the event to different locations. This next year, we're hoping to bring more information to the different schools. As a retired teacher, that's been one of my passions. So, then, after the cemetery, the second part of our day will be a little bit less formal, but we'll be right here at City Hall, and again, we will have some speakers telling a little bit about what's going on at Camp Naco, which we have discovered many of the Nogales Buffalo Soldiers were placed in different locations before coming here, Camp Naco being one of them, and Fort Huachuca, another, those kinds of things. And we also have a high school student, an art student, who did some work for us that we would like to honor from last year's event, and then we will have more high school, Nogales High School performers presenting to be a part of that. So, those would be the two main events on that Saturday, but then we also want to encourage community members or people who are visiting for the event to check out some of the other historical sites. So, as you can see on the back of your handout, or second page, there's the map there, and it has identified some of the historical markers that we would encourage people to go visit. Okay? Ms. Fay?
Ms. Fay, would you please add your... Okay. I am not. I'll just send the Buffalo Soldiers. However, I am an enthusiast of the history of Nogales. And this building, the entire corridor up Western Avenue was Camp Little. Camp Little was occupied, it was, started as Camp Nogales in 1910. In 1915, unfortunately, a young man was shot by a random bullet, Mr. Stephen D. Little, so they renamed the camp after him. And after World War I, from about 1918 on, the camp was primarily occupied by the 25th Infantry and the 10th Cavalry, which were both Buffalo Soldier units. So, here we stand, where they stood 100 years ago. And so, with our event on the grounds of Camp Little, the park behind City Hall, on Saturday, the 28th, well, time is a little still up for adjustment, but an event in the cemetery approximately 10 o'clock, an event behind City Hall at approximately 1:30 or 2 o'clock. So, in order to build your enthusiasm, we...
Some buffalo.
Yes. And encourage...
Thank you.
Come out. We will have more buffalo available at the event.
Ms. Fay is an artist, and she created a cookie cutter, and she plays these. She is so talented. And as you hear Ms. Fay speak, she's very passionate. When the Nogales Buffalo Soldiers did one of our, did one of its articles indicating that we were gonna have this event, within hours of it being published, she had called me and said, how could she help? And it is, Ms. Fay has just been instrumental in the beginning, now, and in the future, just keeping this going, and our historian also, and I just so appreciate you.
And we have created another buffalo, the last big buffalo display that was at the museum last year, moved from Nogales to Tubac, to Pomona, and a couple places after that. And so, now, since we're focusing more on education in the students, we will be, we have a new Buffalo Soldier, or Buffalo, with the history on it that will fold in half that can be transported to the schools.
Yes.
So, the museum will have an exhibit on the 28th regarding Camp Little and the Buffalo Soldiers in Primaria Alta. We certainly invite you to join us, and it will be there as a permanent exhibit.
Excellent.
Thank you.
That's excellent. Good to know. So, again, thank you again for your support.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you on the 28th. And how do we end? Thank you so much. Thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, staff's looking for direction from council, hopefully to fully sponsor this event. We can take care of it.
That's a present.
January 28th.
Yeah. You know, unfortunately, the way it was put on the agenda, but I think council, we, you know, not official, but I think we're all, well, for it, and we will do it officially on the 24th meeting. Are you good? All right. So, I'll put it as a future agenda item for the...
For the 28th.
24th will be the meeting. 24th will be the meeting to get the final approval, and then to do it, you know, on the 28th. Correct? The event is on the 28th.
The event's on the 28th, on the 24th, we'll put an action item so they can, you can have an official direction.
Yes.
But we'll move forward as if you were going to...
Yes. I'm pretty sure. Thank you. Next, I'm presentation number two, the Center of Economic Integrity on Predatory Auto-Title Loans. Mr. Vonia.
Thank you, Mayor. I have my niece, she's, will be doing the presentation for the record, Mayor and Council. I've been a councilor for two years, and I have never seen my parents in council chambers, and the grandchild shows up for one presentation, and both of them are here. Thank you, Stephanie.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and community. Let me pass out a flyer for you guys, really. It is an honor being here. I'm from Nogales, like my uncle mentioned, so it's always great coming back to your hometown and sharing and providing information to the community. So, once again, good evening. My name is Stephanie Paredes. I am the Community Engagement Coordinator for the Center of Economic Integrity. I'm here to tell you guys a little bit about our organization, and mainly, I'm here to warn you guys and tell you guys about predatory auto-titled loans. So, I'm gonna start with a little bit about us. The Center for Economic Integrity is a nonprofit organization whose mission is to build economically strong communities for all and oppose unfair corporate and government practices. We do this by engaging in a variety of strategies such as public policy, regulatory campaigns, education, advocacy, like how I am here today. And I want to tell you guys a little bit about our successes, just because we are just so proud to share these things. Millions of dollars have been allocated to fund high-quality preschool in Tucson and Pima County, and we are looking to expand that, but right now, that is a really, really great success that we're so proud of. Millions of dollars have been appropriated to support kinship foster families, so grandparents, aunts, uncles, who end up fostering their nieces and nephews. Money has been allocated to those families as well, and then also millions of dollars in interest rates of being saved by people targeted by predatory payday lenders. And one of our most recent things have been Proposition 209, which recently passed in November. So, those are just a little bit of examples of what our organization does. And some things that we're working on right now are things like protecting consumers, maintaining support for children and families, eliminating corporate profiteering from this houses, housing crisis that we see unfolding in front of us, and then banning triple-digit interest rates in title loans, which is why... There we go. Why I am here, the more you know, the more you can protect yourself and advocate for your community. So, who has heard of car title loans or auto title loans? Everybody, right? They're all over the place. They cater to our communities. They hire locals. They make it seem friendly. They're out there accessible for everybody, right? Well, let me put a little analogy in your head. So, imagine you're stuck in the middle of the ocean, there's turbulent wind, turbulent waves, you're trying to catch your breath, and you can't. You're about to drown. All of a sudden, boom, boom, sorry, that's my best ship that I could do, but you see a big ship. Here it comes to save you, right? It has a big old sign. Auto title loans, easy for everybody, will save you. You reach out, help. They throw the lifesaver. You hold on as tight as you can, and you think, finally, I can breathe. I'm not drowning. Before you know it, the ship is pulling you faster than you think. You're drowning, you're underwater, and you try to let go of that lifesaver, but like a signature binds you to a contract, you're stuck on that lifesaver. What do you do? You realize you're in a death trap, and for lack of a better word, a death trap. Sorry, how to be cheesy. So, the same way that these auto title loans took advantage, the same way that boat took advantage of that person, the same way auto title loans take advantage of people in a financial emergency, of low-income vulnerable people. A couple of facts, Arizona law permits car title lending at 120 to 204% APR. This type of small loan generally requires the borrower to use their class collateral to guarantee that the loan will be repaid in full at interest rates far higher than Arizona's usually law permits for regular consumer lender loans. Most people end up owing twice as much as they started out with. And sadly, what ends up happening, a lot of the times, I'm being too hard with this, what ends up happening is that people have their car repossessed, people end up having to get lawsuits on them, go to court, and eventually, sometimes having their wages garnished. In a typical year, Arizona borrowers paid $254,924,519 fees in interest for car title loans. That's a lot, and that's happening to people all over our community. I can name people with both my hands that have fallen victim to car title loans. So, one more story, just to pull at your heartstrings. A nice lady that my boss knew, named coincidentally like my grandmother. She lived in Morenci, another small town northeast of us, and she ended up falling ill, having to be transported to the hospital, to a better hospital. As from Nogales note, that happens often. We need better hospitals. And so, she ended up having to pay tons of medical bills and being, having no knowledge of the death trap that car title loans are, and ended up having her car repossessed, having her wages garnished. So, Armida is not an exception. She's a rule. This happens more than we like with car title loans. So, I'm here just to ask you guys to warn your family, warn your friends, warn your communities, offer other options. There, ask your churches. There are foundations, like the Jewish Community Foundation, that offer loans with low interest rates to no interest rates. Ask your family, your neighbors, ask for an advance at your job before you pull out auto title loans, because they end, they end up turning a small financial situation into a financial disaster, and none of us want that for the people in our community, especially if we know our community is being targeted. So, if you guys have any stories, if you or anyone you know has ever fallen as a victim to car title loans, I would love to hear your stories. Your stories make a difference going to legislator and taking our backpack of showing them our proof. So, if you guys have any stories, you can send them to me at stephanie@economicintegrity.org. And also, if you guys would like to follow us on Facebook, Instagram, or Twitter, or find us at economicintegrity.org. Thank you, guys, for listening to me. Thank you, guys, for being here for the community. And that's all I have for you guys today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephanie. Item seven, Financial Monthly Report.
He's coming.
Sorry, I usually get the cue for him to take the stand. So, in front of you tonight, you have the finance report from November of '22. At the end of our first five months, we should be at about 41.67% when it comes to our revenues and our expenditures. If you look at your Table A, this is our general fund. And for our revenue for the first five months, we have collected $14,963,897, which is 54%. And our expenditures are at $12,533,411, which is at 35%. Also, for our shared revenue, you'll see on Table A that we have collected $3,695,830, which is right at 40%. If you move on to Table B, this is our sales tax that we collect. For November, we collected $702,567. This was $322,497 less than last year for November, but we are still $1,236,662 over where we were in November of 2021 compared to 2022.
You see that more, most of it covered out of the sale tax, right?
Yes.
And a little bit of, yeah. And then short on the sales tax PS.
Which is the public safety sales tax, and then our bed tax.
Okay.
And just a quick note on the sales tax, there's numbers that you get from the state, and then there's numbers that we get in our checking account. When it comes to these numbers, it's the ones that physically come into our checking account during that month. So, it could be a little bit of our sales tax income from the month before, but we include it in the month that we receive it here at the city. So, some people see different numbers, but these are the physical numbers that come into the city.
Because I'm hoping December's gonna be a boom.
I already checked, it's much better. I already looked.
I tried getting it through all my care, it was a hassle.
It was, it was. December is looking much better than November did. If you move on to Table C, that's our general fund expenditures per department. You'll notice that we still have some that are highlighted that are above the percentage of the 41.67. Those are still being watched. A lot of them were still due to very large purchases at the beginning of the year that we have to... that we have to account for when it's paid for. And as we get these last few months, we'll start to see those level out.
But why would animal control be a hundred and five percent above?
So when it comes to animal control, we pay, it's a share. So we base that off of our number from last year, and we guessed a little low. So that's why, like, last year, it actually showed like a hundred and nine, almost a hundred and ten percent. So this year, we guesstimated a little low. So next year, we'll guesstimate a little higher. So then it covers it better.
Is there any, one of these that have any con- concerns, uh?
Um, at this point, no, I really don't have any, like, major concerns per department. Um, like I said, the, the ones that are higher, um, are either capital purchases we did at the beginning, or there's also, like, for instance, okay, finance. We had to do our entire audit, and it's in here. We're not paying for it all at first, but it's included in the encumbrance. So that's why, like, finance is a little high.
What did that, that audit include?
So our audit's not finished yet, but it's all of the fiscal year of twenty-two that they're working on. They've been here now twice. Um, we continually work with them. We have a portal that we work with the, um, CLA. And then in probably May or June, they'll present to you like you do every year, where, what their findings are.
Okay, and, and that's finance, all departments?
It's the entire city that gets audited.
Jean, uh, on the volunteer firefighters, what is that expense? Is that for?
So the volunteer firefighters, and I couldn't even tell you when this began, but we pay them, I believe it's fifty dollars a month, and we're down to seven still living, and we pay it until they pass.
So this is just salaries?
Mm-hmm. That's all it is. And that's why that's the one you'll only see. It always matches the percentage. Cause it, it's, works out perfectly unless one of them passes, then we stop paying them.
It's not a salary. It's, it's a retirement. When there used to be volunteer firemen. And, and, and that's why there, there's only.
Yeah, I think there's seven left.
And, and they've been going by the wayside, right? So that's what's left. But as soon as they're gone, then that, that's an expense from the longer hand.
Thank you for clarifying case, Joe.
Yes, thank you. Um, if you move on to table D, that is our HERF. And for HERF and our overweight, for HERF, we have brought in nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty-three dollars, which is thirty-five percent. And overweight fees, we have brought in a hundred and twenty-six thousand, forty-seven dollars, which is at fifty percent. And for the expenditures, we have expensed out one million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars, which is thirty-three percent. And for overweight fees, we have expensed out two million, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand and seventy dollars, which is eighty-two percent. For our table E, it's our sewer fund. We have brought in nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, four hundred and nine dollars, which is twenty-five percent. And we have expensed out nine hundred and three thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, which is forty-one percent. Table F is our water account. And in the water fund, we have brought in one million, five hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and twenty-seven dollars, which is forty-two percent. And we have expensed out two million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-four dollars, which is thirty-one percent. And then the final table is table G.
Yeah, one question. Why, why it's such a big difference?
Between like the income and um, a lot of it is, it's based on the budget that is created. So, like, the expense number would just be based off of your annual budget of your expenses.
But the, these are extra expenses that we've done?
Yes.
Which one was an expense that that really bounces out as, you know, materials and supplies? Seventy-six over or seventy-six?
Seventy-six percent. So that is, would be seventy-six percent of the annual budget of the two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So it's possible that they have purchased a very large item that they had planned on purchasing, but it's already been purchased. And so then it's not brought out over the twelve months. It's paid, it's put in here the month that it's paid.
Okay, thank you.
Um, and then table G is our sanitation. And sanitation has brought in one million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and fifty-six dollars, which is forty-one percent. And has expensed out one million, two hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which is forty percent. Are there any other questions on that part? Okay, then the final part you'll see, which is the water and sewer delinquent report and miscellaneous reports. We currently have six thousand, one hundred and thirty-four active utility accounts. That's water, sewer, sanitation accounts. We have four hundred and fifteen accounts that are on contracts. The total of those is one hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and thirty-one dollars and fifty-three cents. It was decreased by four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents from last month, but we do have two more contracts that people have come in and, and signed up for. We also have a hundred and forty-eight delinquent accounts that are sewer or sanitation only. And those equal three hundred thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. The total has decreased, but the accounts have increased. Um, I have been working more with legal, gosh, in the past two weeks. Um, I think Ms. Montoya has seen me more than, than she normally does. Um, but legal has really stepped it up on getting not just out to just tenants, but also the homeowners of some of the homes that are being rented, trying to find the people responsible. And then we did not have any employee payouts. And you'll notice on this report on the second page, it now has a fuel report on here. Um, the mayor has asked that it be brought down a little bit more simple than all of the charts and graphs. So you'll notice from July to December of this year, we have paid out two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and three dollars and two cents in fuel compared to last year, from July to December, it was a hundred and eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty-nine dollars and fourteen cents. So we're fifty thousand, two fifty-three, eighty-eight above last year. And then you'll also notice, I'll continue the running total for the year. So last year, by the end of the year, we paid four seventy-six, three thirty-six. So that'll be, unless you guys wanted a different way, we can make it a little bit more simple like this.
And, and Jean?
Yes.
This increase is not because, uh, the, the step in using more fuel, it's because of the price of the gas?
The price of the gas, yes, sir.
Thank you for clarifying that, uh, Vice Mayor.
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Any other comment, Mr. Dickey, on, uh, finance?
No, none, mayor.
Hey, next, next item, uh, number eight, orders. A considerable and possible action in order twenty twenty-three dash zero ones, dash zero zero one. An order of the city council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing the Nogales Police Department to enter into a contract with Mariposa Community Health Center in an Arizona nonprofit corporation until August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three in the amount of twenty thousand dollars that will be disbursed to the Nogales Police Department for the participation in community opioid, opioid, uh, response program and supporting MCHC with the mission of prevention, treatment, and recovery of opioid. And this is, cycle submitted abuse. Chief, any comment on this? Does this come from, uh, Mariposa, right?
Yes, it comes from Mariposa. Up to twenty thousand, they'll give the police department.
Okay, and this, to fight the opioid?
Yes.
Okay, so, any discussion? Nope, uh, all in favor? No, thanks. Motion passes. B, consider, consideration and possible action in order twenty twenty-three dash zero one dash zero zero two. An order of the council of City of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Inova Engineering, Inc. for the Royal Road Water Main Replacement Project for an amount not to exceed of two million, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And two million, eight hundred and twenty-eight, four hundred and eight dollars. Any discussion? Yes, sir.
I have a question, uh, to Mr. Dickey or Mr. Barcenas, whoever could answer it.
Go ahead.
These projects, uh, originally were, I think, concerning, were discussing the, um, the Royal Road. Originally, it was at seven hundred and eighty or nine mil, or nine hundred. Uh, we needed two million dollars more for this project. Uh, and the other one that we're gonna discuss also, um, Mr. Barcenas, why, why is it that it went, uh, this increase? Because with these two projects that we're gonna approve, we're already at three million and three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, and we only have fifteen million, or actually less than that, to, um, uh, to pay these thirty-one projects.
I'm sorry, council. Yes, uh, uh, the, the cost estimation was done about three or four years ago when we started the process of designing these projects. As you know, the cost of construction has been going really, really high. When we bid at the projects, the lowest bid was this, this amount. So we don't have any control over what, what the cost is and, uh, who is willing to give us the best price. So, uh, we knew from a couple of years ago that, uh, and I think I, I presented that to the council saying that the prices were going up and we would not have enough money to, to do all the the WIFA projects with the amount of money that we have. So, uh, this is the, the, the result of solid, somebody willing to do the work for this amount. And we had four different companies competing for this, and, and this was the lowest bid.
Mr. Barcena, let me, as far as I know, the, this project was bef, uh, estimated, you know, maybe a year ago, uh, at, uh, like six, seven hundred thousand dollars less. Uh, and unfortunately, I know the, the, the lapse of the city or council, um, not pushing it and, and getting it done. And, you know, I could tell the council, you know, right now, we're looking at two million, eight hundred thousand. If we keep on waiting, we're looking at three or four million dollars. And, uh, and it's gonna, ain't gonna get cheaper. It's gonna get more expensive.
Yes, unfortunately, the, the situation of the market is the prices are going up. The supply is still not there, so the timeframe also to get all the supplies uh, is really, some of the, the, the supplies that they need for this. There are some, uh, uh, valves and things like that that they're, well, the, the requirement now is everything has to be made in the USA. So the prices are a lot higher. And, uh, the delivery time in some of these things, they have fifteen weeks of delivery time for some of the valves. So that's, that's the market, that's the way it is.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Duff.
Taking all that into account.
Can you please turn on your mic?
Oh, I'm sorry, here we go. Taking all that into account, Mr. Barcenas, uh, the estimate we have here, are, is that company, uh, tied into that amount or?
Yes.
Okay.
That's, that's a contract that they are gonna sign, and they are committed to construct that project with that.
Right, and they already took, uh, they did all their due diligence, a survey, they, I mean, they're not gonna come up with a higher price down the road because of unforeseen factors.
I cannot guarantee that because
Well, wait a minute.
I, I, I don't know that they are gonna be finding something that was not seen, but, uh, they are committed. We did, uh, the due diligence. We went and did, uh, soul reports and the engineers verified everything. As far as, as we know, that we are not expecting anything higher than that. The contractor is bound by that amount, so, uh, unless there is something really strange, there shouldn't be any, any change order, if that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, that, that, they didn't take something into account, you know, as, as far as that it creates a bigger expense for them, and now they want the city to pay them more.
We had reviewed this, uh, this project by three different engineering companies. The, the design engineer, we have a consultant engineer that's helping me review all the projects from WIFA. And, uh, the, a consultant that we asked them to review that everything was proper in the, in the proposed bid. And we compare with, with every single, uh, proposal that they did, and, uh, everything is.
And we've used them. The city has used them in the past, this company.
Yes.
They've done good work.
Yes.
And they don't come up with this, so they haven't had that, that problem.
Had any problem.
Later, you know, asking for more money.
They're working right now in two different projects with the city of Nogales. They did the, the water tank that's on the top of the hill and, uh, the stream west on Mariposa. So they, we have worked with them, and we haven't got any issues.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Gladier.
I just want, I just wanna take exception as to the fact that, uh, the prior, prior administration was being blamed for the delay. At least in the time I've been here, I think we ran into ADQ approval problems, uh, environmental agency problems, so it wasn't just that. So I think we should move ahead before we add another million to this, but that's just what I wanted to add.
I have a few, I have a couple of questions, Mr. Barcenas, um. We have the, another one, uh, I, I have other certificates I have here from ADQ. Uh, the next one that's up for bid is the one that, it's for Western Avenue, and it has, um, six, six streets, uh, gathered to that. With that said, um, I think that's gonna pretty much take up a lot of us, a lot of money, am I correct in, in assuming that? Uh, have you checked, uh, do we have enough money as far as HERF or, or overweight money to pay for the asphalt? It's, because ADQ only covers, um, the trenches, right? Am I, am I correct in that?
Yes, so.
So, are, are, are we gonna have enough? Have you contemplated in checking if we're gonna have enough to finish these projects?
The way that, uh, the design is, we included in this price and this contract to cover the trench twelve feet wide. That, the idea is that at least we will cover one lane of the road where we do the construction. The, the idea, and I have been talking to, to Mr. Dickey and Mr. Kissinger, that at the time when they are ready to do the paving, we would come back to you and say, uh, you, you wanna do the whole street? Uh, you could match the twelve feet that we have included in this contract to add, to do the whole street. Because we, uh, to begin with, uh, with WIFA, money, we cannot do complete street paving. Uh, but, uh, my opinion and my recommendation is that at the time when the paving is gonna be done, to check and see if there is overweight fees or, or HERF money, or, or another source of money to, to make the street completely repaved.
Al- also, so, um, since pretty much we're gonna, I think we're gonna end up, we're gonna use our borrowed money after the project. Uh, you have a bunch of, uh, ADQ certificates here, and you have for the, uh, sewer also, so uh, have you, have you discussed any, any, uh, strategies to, uh, where we're gonna get the money to finish all these projects?
Well, uh, I, I put something in the agenda, I think, a couple meetings ago to discuss, uh, the, the point that we don't have enough money. And I, I need a direction, how we're gonna, we have options, I, I believe. We, we can go and ask additional monies to WIFA and see how much we are able to get, uh, as a grant, how much money we can get as additional money as a, as a loan, low-interest loan. Or go looking for another source of money for these projects. Uh, their option is Their option is prioritize which project you want to do first. And that's, I believe you, you directed me to do these two projects and those are the ones that are before you. And those were the top priorities, that's why.
And with that said, Mr. Barcenas, it is, I've noticed here that you have, what I think, one, two, three, four streets that haven't, we don't have any type of, from ADEQ or anything like that pending, right?
We have about four that are pending now.
Okay, so once we get the bid, once we get the bid back from the, from the Western Avenue project, would that give you a better understanding of what, how we can prioritize?
Yes.
Whatever money is left over.
Right now, with, with these two projects that are here, it's going to be over a $4 million amount. So we have about five, almost $6 million in the water. So my guess is when we go to Western, probably we're going to be really close to, to the, to the, to the money available for water. One option that we have, we haven't done the sewer.
Yeah.
The sewer, I, I believe probably they are going to be a little bit lower, but I, I don't know until we bid it. So we can ask WIFA, we can allocate some of that money in the, in the loan that we have from sewer to water and then you make the decision.
What, what would happen if, is it, is it the same priority to do the sewer to the water projects? I mean, is it, are they both that same priority, level of priority?
Well, there, there are some projects on the, on the sewer that are high priority because they're like banker. That, I think, has to be done at the same time that we do the water because they're in the same street and we don't want to open the street and then close it and then reopen that again with the sewer.
But I'm bank, I'm banked, I didn't, at least, at least not in my documents. Do, do we have that permit already from, we do? Okay, okay, all right, that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
And any other questions? So all in favor for B? Please. Oh, no, make a motion, sorry, thank you, sir. Mr. Bohorkis, thank you, taken by Ms. Melendez. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item C, consider, consideration and possible action of order 2023-01-003. An order of the Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to award a contract to Inova Engineering, Inc. for the Rancho Grande Water Main Replacement Project for an amount not to exceed $1,968,219.
So.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Item D.
Item D will be.
Okay, item D will be, well, moved after executive session. Auto agree, okay. We'll go down to the ordinance. Ordinance 98, consideration and possible action of ordinance. Is that a miscue? Is that a miscue, the zero before?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so it's of ordinance 2023-01-001. An ordinance of the City of Nogales amending ordinance number 20X adopted by, adopted June 27, 1989 by amending the official zoning map by rezoning partial of property in the city from single-family residential 18 SFR 18 to multiple-family residential MFR on Santa Cruz County Assessor's Partial Number 102-03-010A. Can I have more information on this one?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, Ms. Paz.
So did you have any specific questions or did you want to?
Where is it and what?
So it's a parcel located between Nogales High School and the interstate. And it's Frank Reed and the interstate. So I can show you a map that I.
Please.
So this is the general area and I'll go down to another.
Right across the street are the townhomes.
So the townhomes on Frank Reed and the interstate.
Oh.
So it's north of that. So the orange parcel is the high school and the subject parcel is the red outlined. So it's a zone change from single-family 18 to multifamily residential. And then the adjacent townhomes are, have the existing multi-home residential zoning currently.
Is that just a little square on top, that one?
It's both of these.
Both of them?
Roughly how many homes are going to be added to?
Based off the applicant's information, I think they had a 12 to 18 number. But we have no building plans, we have no site development plans at this point. Those are just their loose numbers at this point.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Paz, on this change from to residential, is that, is that for apartment buildings or for family homes?
So multifamily residential allows for both, apartments and townhomes. The applicant's information on their narrative, they put, they have intention to build townhouses on this property.
And is there any difference between just regular residential housing and low income housing? Would the, would the change be different, the zoning?
So from a zoning perspective, the current zoning is single-family 18, right? So that's your detached home. That's, you know, metal hills or those type of houses. And this particular zone change, if it's approved, will allow them to build townhouses, apartments, duplexes, triplexes, anything that's considered multifamily housing.
And do you need any input from the residents in that area?
So previous to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we sent out letters to any property owner within 300 feet of the subject parcel. We also posted on the property and we posted in newspapers. So all those public notifications were done before the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We received, I think, one neutral inquiry asking about what's going on that property, what are the intentions behind the zone change. But we received no complaints or no opposition letters, I should say.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Has, being that it's so close to the school, has there any been any communication with the school and?
So I believe they received one of the notification letters. You know, the, the way that the mapping works is we pretty much draw a 300-foot radius around that parcel. And anybody who falls within that 300-foot radius gets a letter from us. So that was done again in the public notification procedures.
And the last question would be, has there been any plans for added construction in that area? Where, being the school is heavily trafficked as it is already, the more construction we get, the more it increases the flow of it. And will, have they taken the, come into studies? They'll be able to control all that traffic in and out?
So for future development or fully development projects, we really handle all those comments and concerns at the site development stage. And so this is the step previous to a site development stage. So like I said, we have no building plans, no townhome plans, no duplexes. But this is simply their intention to get the zone changed before moving on with the site development plan. In the site development plan, we're looking at entrances, exits, fire hydrants, garbage, site visibility setbacks, all those things coming to play at a site development stage.
Mr. Graias, Councilman Graias.
Just to confirm, Mr. Paz, the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission is to approve this motion?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Councilwoman Montiel?
Mr. Paz, may I ask who owns this?
Yes, so the property was applied for by LLC called Los Adobes LLC.
Hi.
Los Adobes LLC. And so they were submitted on behalf of that group and the applicant or the consultant they're working with was Mr. Eduardo Duran. So he's the person who applied on, on their behalf.
Okay, so when other people apply for these type of zoning, you know, permission to, you know, zone like we are doing today, is it as easy as it, as it is for this person? Is, is it, is the playing field fair for everybody?
The playing field is fair for everyone. We treat everyone, pre-application meetings, communications, public notifications, they're all pretty procedure. Planning and zoning is a public meetings, public hearing. So it showcases that transparency. And like I said, we posted on the property, we posted in newspaper, we posted on the city website, all the media notifications.
But internally, is, in your opinion, is it, is it fair for all the residents or people outside that are applying?
Yeah, so, you know, this application pretty much mirrors conditional use permits, variances, zone changes, subdivisions. Again, you know, those things are built into that planning and zoning notification.
Nobody gets special treatment of any sort or anything? They follow the process as per.
We're here, we're here on, on public meetings, we record their meetings. There's an posted agenda, it's very transparent.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I ask, how far along, how much time does an applicant have? You know, once he, you know, applies, how much time does, do you guys just give the public to give any feedback? When was this application put in?
I think it was put in June or July and then we had the public hearing September 29, I believe. Can find out the, yeah, September 29. And then we post all the notifications on the property within a week. It's posted in newspaper in two weeks. We send out letters three weeks ahead of time. And so again, that system is built so that you see something, right? You see something in the mail, you see something in newspaper or you see something on the property. It's not likely that you're going to miss all, all of those. You're going to see something in your neighborhood or you're going to get a letter from me saying that there's a public hearing coming up.
Anybody else had any other questions? Did we get a?
They always say LLCs and that, but, but yet there's people behind the LLC.
You'll never know.
You never, they don't, that's not public.
If you go to the Cooperative Commission website, you can find that.
Then you find out, okay.
Do you want to say something, Mr.?
Yeah, it's LLC, but the owners are members of the LLC's public practice. Yeah.
Okay.
So is there a motion?
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve, ordinance 02-023-01-001.
There's no zero before the first, right? That was a typo.
Right. I know what I see.
So it's motion 2023-01-001. Anybody second?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Councilwoman Melendez? All in favor?
Aye.
All against? Go move.
Okay, now, now in the ordinance, when you pass an ordinance, it requires two separate readings. Unless you waive the second reading. So to do that, somebody has to make a motion to waive the second reading.
Okay, I'll go ahead and waive the motion.
Second.
Wait, wait.
Second.
Take a, take a vote. I want to vote on it.
You want to roll call vote?
Vote on this, yeah, what Mr. Machado is saying right now.
Okay, yeah, okay, I thought you had a question too. Okay, so all in favor to waive the second reading? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
How many nays?
Montiel and.
That just means that at the next meeting, it'll be brought again and it'll not have to be another motion to approve.
Thank you for your support, Mr. Machado. Number 10, council moves to go into executive session.
Second.
Executive session, an order of the City Council of the City of Nogales, Arizona, approving settlement agreement regarding litigation International Association of Firefighters, Local 2763 versus City of Nogales, case number CV2022-0023, discussion and consultation with attorney regarding pending litigation and completed settlement ARS 38-431.0384. We'll move to go in executive session.
Second.
All in favor, go into executive session?
Aye.
It'll be a few for a couple of minutes, hopefully. It'll be used for a couple of minutes, hopefully.
Do you want to do a motion?
Sure. Okay, I move to approve the settlement agreement.
Let's read it.
Read it.
You gotta read it all.
Okay, the order. In order of the city council of the city of Nogales, Arizona approving settlement, yeah, approving settlement agreement regarding litigation international associations of firefighters local 2763 versus the city of Nogales case number CV2022-0023.
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah. I'm hopeful that we work together in the future and that we are both working in good faith. It's important to the residents as it is to for me and for everyone to work again in harmony and 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 both parties working in good faith. Thank you.
Without said, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. With that goes number 11, Mayor's and Council report on current events, current and past. Mr. Bonilla.
I have nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Doe.
I guess it's, you might, you might, you might. I have a little bit of a, oh, I'm sorry.
I guess I ran into, I guess, the end of the year going and and supporting the firemen and their giveaway toys for tots. And I still can't get over how successful that program is for the community that I'm so glad, just want to thank all the firemen involved that they did a great job, put a lot of smiles on those little faces. And it's just something that I want to, again, bring out because it really makes a difference in kids' lives. Thank you. The other thing, I I guess I've been looking around the community. One of the things that we have left, I guess, for beautification of our community or our city. And I've been noticing in the streets that instead of working for that program that we had in the past, I see these city bins, big city bins in in neighborhoods that are big eyesore over it. And and they can put them somewhere else where it's hidden, but yet they put them right in front of the city. I mean, the streets that that are arteries to get across from one part of town to the other. Hopefully, we'll be able to take care of that in the future and and make Nogales look a little better than what it does.
We'll work on it. Jumping to the next one. Ms. Menendez.
Well, we're done with the Christmas village casitas at Caden Park. Parks and Dick are taking down all the casitas by tomorrow. So it was a good event. It was 24 casitas. We had a lot of people really involved, and I think we'll do it next year, maybe more casitas. But and then on top of that, I'm working on the calendar events for 2023, and I'll have them ready maybe next week. Okay?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay.
Just wanted to say happy new year to everybody and look forward to working for
the citizens in this coming year. And thank you all, employees and staff, doing a great job.
Councilwoman Montiel.
Just very quickly, happy new year. But I also want to thank everybody that we did already at the beginning of the meeting, congratulate everyone that was involved in inauguration. It was a lot of work. It was fun, and I hope the citizens as well as the employees enjoyed it. And that's all I have for today. Thanks. And happy new year too. I went to a lot of swearing, but the good kind. On December 30, we were up at the old courthouse for Mr. Adrian Fontes, both of office up there. He was sworn in by 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 Judge Jimmy Soto, yeah. And then on January 5, we went to the inauguration of the governor in Phoenix. That was a very interesting ceremony. And on January the 10, which was yesterday, we went to Tucson to listen to the governor's state of the state. And that was also a very interesting, you know, the the governor's very willing to work with Nogales, you know, she she met the mayor and they, you know, they exchanged a lot of good ideas. And she wants to make a trip down to Nogales and see and and also Mr. Fontes says, you know, he's the Secretary of State now, that we have a voice in Phoenix now so that we can, you know, any concerns that we have here down at the by the border, then we can always reach him at the at his office. So it was it was a very good two weeks, and we made a lot of good contacts up in Phoenix and Tucson. So that's that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. I was I've been busy for the last four months before getting inaugurated. I've been busy visiting Governor Sonora, already had six visits with him, seven with the one that he gave to my inauguration. I've been up in Phoenix, met with Senator Kelly, Mr. Grijalva. You know, I've been really busy trying to bring things to the to the city, involved with the commissioner from the IOI, try to help us get that, you know, fix and negotiate it and take the responsibility from the city. You know, I think we're in good in a good path. I apologize to all the directors. I haven't had the chance to go direct and 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 say thank you to all the employees and thank you for what you do for the cities. That's in the plan for next week, hopefully. But, you know, I want to show all the employees that I'm here for them and and we're here for our citizens. I want to show all the other, you know, people that were willing to work with everybody. I also was with Mr. Bohorkis at the inauguration of Ms. Hobbs, you know, got to see the Attorney General, Mr. Horn, Education, Mr. Fontes, State Secretary of the State. I did a crazy drive down to El Paso, was down down, I did not shake his hand, but I was there. The President visited El Paso on on Sunday. I took off here Saturday night, arrived over there very early in the in the morning, came back 7:30 at night, but I think it was worth it, you know, crazy, but how it sounds. But I arrived at the airport, I said, you know, everybody said, who are you? I'm the mayor of Nogales, and I'm here to see the President. And do you have an appointment? Do you have? No, but I think I deserve it because I'm the mayor of Nogales, one of the biggest ports of entries. And they gave me my card. At least six Secret Service people got my card. Then they they called Air Force One, they did all what they had to do. But so up, you know, I heard yesterday, card Senator called Senator Kelly's office, he called called Supervisor Moleda to ask who I was. Got approved, got approved, got a pass. Young lady from the Secret Service told me, the other thing, you can't see him here at the airport, go to the next event, gave me a White House guest pass to the next event. Hey, White House knows who Jorge Maldonado, the mayor of Nogales is. So I'm in their books. So, you know, I'm doing it for the city. And I'm, you know, yesterday I went to Tucson, visit the governor, again, asked her to come and visit us, help us and everything. She's all willing. She's all willing to come down, willing to bring a Soto Mayor and help out our city. She knows the the rural cities down in the border always get left out. So we're trying to make it the best for for our community. So guys, feel free to come to my office, feel free to call me, feel free to address any of the council. We're here for you and for our citizens. Thank you. Future agenda items. I'll start. We got to counsel, we got to look at, you know, what are we going to do with the Chase Building? You know, that's another future thing that keeps on keeps on adding up. You know, I've talked, I've talked about doing an ambassador youth program, you know, John, Mr. Dickey, where has any experience that stop start putting, you know, I don't mind putting an executive chair on the side there for two, three kids. Counsel, think about it, think about it. Do we get one kid, two kids, three kids, four kids? When I've gone to to conferences, it's a shame that Nogales doesn't have youth representation there, that youths have their own seminars, their own things to do and all that. And, you know, it's, it's great to have youth start to develop, you know, the political life, like, you know, we never got to do it. So, you know, somebody, some of you did it in school, being, you know, on the school board or school presidents, class presidents, stuff like that. And, you know, others didn't. I remember I was treasurer one time, but that's a long time. But, you know, that's my senior year. And but we need to work on those things and get people involved. I've talked to, you know, on my on my inauguration, we need to get CPR going, you know, we need to get CPR courses. I've talked to, you know, I got a call today from also the Mariposa Clinic, Dr. P. Pereira, he's willing to help out and support. A gentleman the other day called me and said, you know, he's willing to bring doctors from Mexico if we need, you know, people from Mexico for people that don't speak Spanish, they're willing to support us and everything. So one way or the other, we're going to do it. We're going to do it. We're going to get it going. And, you know, we have a dozen more certified CPRs, you know, people and and, you know, there's things that we could do. There's things we could do. Through Little League, I got four four AED machines approved and donated by the Mariposa Clinic. And, you know, I'm going to need your help to train, train people how to use them, you know, and and we could use them to not just train Little League people, train citizens. So, you know, those those we're looking, we're going to try to see where we could put them, you know, we use city facilities, you know, so I'm thinking on putting one around the Memorial Park, one around Little League, one one around Fleischer, one around maybe the rec if we don't have one there. But, you know, any place we have it, it could save a life, and the life is well worth it. And then, you know, pretty much that's it. But let's put those things on the agenda. And also, our vision, you know, I've asked all directors, counsel, I asked all directors, just like I asked you to give me ideas, your points, what do you want to work in, you know, next six months, next year. But we're going to put them out. We're gonna follow, you know, and same thing we're going to do with the directors. I asked all directors, give me your points, give me your ideas, give me me, give me your what-to-do list, or what what's already in 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 the program that we got to follow up. I think following up is one of the main things we lack. We do not follow up. And not just the council, the the committee doesn't know where we're at, you know. So I think we got to be open and and and, you know, if fire has a project or 10 projects, let's put them where everybody sees it. But, you know, chief, just like you, police, parks and rec, all directors are going to be responsible for following up and and getting things done. You know, I think that's the only way to go because if we put them on the chart and don't don't move them or don't think about them, we're not doing nothing. And I'm not here to do nothing. I'm here to progress. And that's what we're going to do. Mr. Bohorkis and its future items.
Well, I don't know if I've got any room for the agenda. You've got a whole bunch of stuff on there. Right now, the only thing I can think of is I wanted an update on the Tchaf Park.
Thank you.
And and maybe later on in the week or next week, we can still submit items to the agenda, right? Is that right?
Yes, yes.
So so, you know, if I think of anything else that that I wanted on the agenda, I'll go ahead and contact Mr. Dick. That's all.
I have a few, but I wanted to just ask Mr. Dickey, what's now that we're going to have two meetings a month, what if you could just send us an email, what's your timeline to submit things to be placed on the agenda to allow you and Mr. Mati and all of you to prepare a week before? Or you could tell me later, but I don't, I'll put stuff on the agenda by the end of the week. Thank you.
Can I step in, Ms. Montiel? You know, I would like to at least have it by the the Thursday prior to the to the meeting. That way, we could hopefully get the agenda out on Friday, and we could look at it and, you know, and hopefully get the full agenda. Obviously, there's going to be times where we're going to add a, add a, you know, an item or something. But hopefully, the first, you know, the agenda could come out the Thursday prior to the the meeting. So the meeting's on Wednesday, it'll still come out on the Thursday prior to the meeting. If the meeting's on Tuesday, it'll still come out on the Thursday prior to the meeting. You know, if there's something that pops out on Monday, whatever, and we have to adjust, you know, we'll adjust. But at least we have 98% or 99% of the agenda in our minds and with the information to to come here and make wise decisions for our community.
I don't know if this will count as a future agenda item, but I would like to ask staff to look into the Country Club Drive where the swamp is. There's a set of four streetlights that belong to the city. They don't belong to Unisors, they don't belong to ADOT. I've narrowed it down to the city. They don't work because there's an underground fault and it's underwater. So we need to see what we can do to repair those, remove them, or what other action we can take. So you can bring that back to us as soon as possible.
Councilwoman Montiel.
Hi, Ms. Menendez. Have you heard about the Center Comunitario en Bos Nogales, the ones that they're working right now at the Nogales housing?
No.
Well, I'm going to give you all that information.
Thank you.
It's Trujicanos por la Causa Consulado Mexicano in the city because housing is lending them the space. But they want to involve whatever service available. So they asked me about the the CPR classes. They're already having right now computer classes from a kid from the UVA. And then they are also having English classes. And then there's a doctor that is going to be giving free service, whatever kind of service they need. It's going to be for the whole community, not just for the people around the housing project. So I it's a great program. I'll let you know all that information. And I really think we should, as a community, be involved.
Yes. And is this also, was this through Councilman, not Councilman, Consulor?
Marcos, yeah.
Marcos? Okay. Yeah, I've been working with him in a couple of things. Yes.
He needs to, he wants to conquer the world like that.
I know.
So I want to see what we can do. Yeah. But I think it's it's a great thing they're doing. And it's a lot of people involved.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's get all the information we can. And that way, we spread it out and get, you know, make sure the community is knows about it.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Doe.
There's a couple of things.
Mike.
There's a couple of things. One is find out, I know, I was going to check with with staff, and and if it needs to come to the council, well, then I'd like to place it on the agenda. It's to have the graffiti abatement program for the city that any graffiti that comes up, again, it's an eyesore. Well, we need to deal with it. I don't know right now. I don't think there's a department that does that. But I'd like to look into that and hopefully maybe get together with Mr. But I'd like to look into that and hopefully maybe get together with Mr. Dickey and see what, what he suggests. Uh, the other thing is that I got to look into and find out, see if we need to put Palo Duro back on, on the agenda and talk about it and see what, what we're going to do with that beautiful land out there and, and hopefully something that's very useful for the community. But, uh, that's one of the other things that I'd like to, to address. Um, for the time being, that's it.
Councilman, uh, Bonillas?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, pending what we get from the bids on the Western Avenue for the WIFAP program, um, I would like to place an agenda on them for possible discussion and action or action. Uh, once we get back the numbers for, for that, for that bid, reason for that, because we had three years to spend that money and we're at almost a year and a half already. And by the time we get everything going, we're going to hit the three-year mark. So, uh, we need, we need to make, um, fast decisions, but more importantly, smart decisions.
All right.
So, um, I'm hoping that, um, I, we get those bids before the other meeting.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Good thing you brought Palo, uh, Mr. Doyle, you know, and I want to throw it out to the council, think about it. Um, there's a new sports paddle ball. We got two racquetball, two tennis courts out there that, uh, I think be ideal for that. Uh, I don't know if you've seen it. It's, uh, it's a new sport. Uh, it's paddle ball and pickleball. But the paddle ball is, it's a smaller and the pickleball, I think it's played on the bigger court. But, you know, Nogales Sonora put it in around the, the old jail on the Periférico. Uh, Hermosillo has it, it's a boom. I, I looked into it and it's on, it's, you're looking at something, uh, like $4,000, $5,000 per court or something like that, uh, you know. And so, but, you know, uh, we got to look at more, more recreational and stuff like that, things that we got to do for the kids. You know, uh, on those lights that you made a comment, you know, if we have trouble with the ground and all that, especially with wetlands and all that, let's put solar lights. You know, I've, I've got, I've got some on my, you know, my ranch that worked beautiful, you know, 120 volts and all that and no wires. You know, that's possible, John, and we could put it on, 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 you know, public streets like that. Uh, you know, I thought those were state lights, but, you know, whoever lights they are, we got to get them going. You know, so if it's Unisors, let's get them going. Good luck, guys, and God bless you. Okay.
Before we leave, I'd like to publicly congratulate Juan Pablo Lopez. He won gold yesterday in that tournament. Uh, yes, for the Special Olympics.
All right.
So he was repping the state of Arizona.
Anything else, uh, directors, uh, Mr. Dickey, John?
Yeah, just, uh, let you all know that you'll see a lot of activity going on downtown from Public Works all the way to the border. They're starting that phase of the sliplining of the IOI. So if you're going to go to the post office or go downtown, expect delays, expect issues. So I, I just.
Have we, have we sent?
Warn you.
Have we sent or can we send through the, you know, through the water, you know, kind of map and where the bridges are going to be, delays, you know, any, a little explanation on, on, out to the community of what, what to expect, you know, as, you know, I know the Santa Cruz training, they go out driving with the kids and all those, you know, delays or traffic jams will, you know, keep them from doing, uh, what they want to do. But is there a way to get, get out some information to the public, um, you know, obviously, or even put, you know, whatever we send on, uh, on the, through the mail, to the water people, uh, let's also put it on Facebook or wherever we can, uh, to inform the community what, what it's going to, you know, inquire and how, how we need to get around it.
Mr. Mayor, we'll work with IBWC to get the information from them so we can start putting it out.
Thank you. Thank you. With that, with that said, anything else? Uh, I move to adjourn this meeting? Second. So move, meeting adjourned.